Home, most of you not be here, Eleanor?
Here.
Michelle?
Yep.
I'm in the present. Ledge Johnson here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have one request which has two items on it. One with respect to volunteer pay, which is already on the agenda at item 10B. Address it then. And the other one in reference to the trail plan, and we should be able to address that in Park and Rec, make that item G2, the trail plan. Does that work for you, bro?
Perfect.
Super. Any other comments or additions to the agenda? Motion to adjourn the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the agenda. Pass it on.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Do I, your point? Motion carries. Consent agenda discussion?
I did get a change for the minutes. On page five at the top, they have there, it's redundant, it has the motion twice, so can remove one of those.
Yeah, I had one other request as far as the minutes that we spell out abbreviations the first time used. The one is on page six, TH25, from Highway 27. Just sort of re-spelling those out when we use abbreviations. Any other comments for the consent agenda?
I have a question on page 11. Justin, 5995 for engineering. What's that going on right now?
We're off the memory of all the voices that are here, but I know we've been working on the CIP plan, we've been working on the regional park, Fairmont, we've been working on wells and wellhouse, plan. That's the things that come to mind really often like that.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have an eye on it.
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries four of them. The Wright County Sheriff's Department, this month you'll notice that there are two separate reports that are put in there. That's based with great feeling in reference to this, to give us a different report as well as the one we were receiving. The report that we were receiving is the dispatch report, and the report that was added was the call for service report, which gives a better idea of what the officer is actually doing, what the deputy is actually doing in their tour of duty. It gives you a by date as far as the description and where that was. Can't be specific as to the other items on that, the exact street address, because that's not public data, but that gives you what's happening as far as what's going on in the city as far as our police coverage. For last month, it was about four calls daily, is what it was, that they actually had an actionable item that was reported. I appreciate Kevin helping me with that as well, be able to get a report that's more defining some more what they're actually doing on the road.
Yeah, thanks Kevin for that, because this is a lot more detailed. And if you look at this, what is, when it says like civil process?
You observe divorce papers, a call for services law, or any kind of civil paper, summons a complaint, or mortgage foreclosure, or any of that stuff, those are all calls for service.
What does ATL mean?
Attempted locational.
Okay. What is snore?
Seismic parking violations. For ordinance.
All right. Thank you.
Just move on to Monday, I give you a report for city council. Billy wants to turn it up?
Oh, sure. Uh, so this past month, I attended the personnel meeting on Saturday first, and we had a nice little break over Christmas and New Years. I attended Park and Rec meeting, the Montrose Days Committee meeting, and then the workshop this afternoon. The Montrose Days Committee has a few things coming up. The first unit taking place January 23rd, which is a Saturday, they're having bingo bags with chili feed for eight here, and then there is, oh, well, fish fries coming up towards the end of February and beginning of March, so keep eyes out for those as well.
The luau is when?
Luau is the 18th. Is when the luau, which will also take place here.
Do they have a lot of?
Bean bags is signing up date of.
So, to be determined. Are they looking for chili, or is it looking for?
They're doing the chili. Yep.
Do you need to show us?
Um, or the Park and Rec, we'll talk about that later. And then I just attended a PAC meeting as well. They did Secret Santa along with Montrose Days very well, I attended. They are looking for donations though for men's items, because they got a lot of stuff donated this year, so they wanted to make more profit, which is good. So if there's any like men's stuff, or gift wrap, anything like that, you want to donate to the school, they are looking for donations for you until next Christmas. Nothing really coming up right now. They got quite a good turnout. There will be a senior launch meeting that's coming up, so that's all it is.
We have the staff council public, personnel meeting, union negotiation meeting, initial meeting, attended the VFW meeting, voiced out the true ski trip at the Court of Honor and one of the regular meetings, the FEED event on the 22nd of December, which went really, really well. They have another one coming up. I don't have a date on that one offhand.
Will it be next Tuesday?
I think it is next Tuesday. And then District Command as well for scouting and roundtable, and then the workshop that we just finished today. Boyd?
The regular consolidating, so personnel committee meetings and union negotiations.
There's a real person? I just thought it was a real help again.
Do you make any resolution 2015-1 donation?
Yeah, sorry, the actual document is correct though, in the, or the agenda, it is incorrect. So it's 2016 dash zero one.
Is there a list of donations?
So Wendy put this together, each year at the beginning of the year, you just have to note the donations that have come into the city.
Is it just dollar donation, or actual, like merchandise as well?
I believe it's just cash, it looks like cash amounts.
Right, because product was also donated. Do we have to have that as an in here?
No.
No, just cash?
Just cash.
Okay.
Any other discussion on that? Need a motion to adopt 2016-01.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2016 dash zero one, accepting donations.
I'll second that. I have an eye on it.
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries four of them. Okay, public works. I have nothing to add. Emergency management, reference to Matt Menard, who's the emergency manager. That will be the resignation of Matt Menard. He has taken the position as the assistant chief, and will not be able to fill that position anymore, so we with regret accept his resignation and thank him for his service. Anything else to add on that, Kevin?
No, I think it's just something we need to discuss at a future workshop, as far as what we're doing, moving forward with the position.
The opportunity was put out to the other members of the fire department, but little interest as far as where we went with that. So as a council, we need to discuss how we address that as far as emergency management operations. It would be coordinated closely with the fire department, but should not be one of the officers of the fire department, because we need them out doing their job instead of coordinating with the Gray County and with other places. So we'll need to address that further. Personnel committee?
Do you want me to do that?
Sure.
Okay. We met on this number 21st. We discussed the commission appointments and position descriptions. We're looking at recreating those a little bit, so they're a little bit more straightforward. We also briefly discussed the 2016 appointments for city council. There was discussion on the alternative urban area wide review. It's going to take probably hours to sift through all of that paperwork, so we need to figure out several ways to sit down to plan that. There was discussion on vacation leave, wage ranges and increases, as we go through the personnel policy. There was also a discussion about a specific property on Lundland Avenue and the supplement ordinance that we need to relook at. And then discussion on a data request that was pretty significant in moving forward with that as well. And then discussion on whether or not non-residents can and should be serving on the city commissions. Started it in a nutshell. Where are we at, maybe on that data request? So we do have part of it fulfilled, we just wrote a letter asking for some clarification of some of the items, so we're waiting for them to get back to us.
Are we moving ahead, depending on that person's interest still in this, charging as well?
Um, I talked to Andy, and it depends on how the data, and that's why we're asking for clarification on how this person wants it. And so it depends on specific, what details he gives, this person gives us to, yeah.
Thank you.
Planning commission?
I can give a quick overview. So the December 16th planning commission meeting, it really focused on reviewing the CUPs every issue throughout the year. Tony, what's all of them?
Um, I think we, does anyone have a need to make an explanation on those, or an expansion? Pretty self-explanatory in the minutes.
Yep.
Just need to have the follow-up on those CUPs to ensure that we are actually making sure that they are, we just expect they're closer to it.
Yep, and then right after this, I don't, I, there is a recommendation to extend one of these CUPs, so I guess I could jump into that.
Do we need a motion on that?
So that's number two. So at the planning commission meeting, they did go over the property at 350 Emerson Avenue, which is part of the Millhausen Auto F411 Nelson. They have a conditionally used permit for off-site parking. Some of the work, there's three items on page 34 that haven't been completed at this time, and they are seeking an extension until July 1st, 2016 to complete these items. It's the submittal of parking lot plans with proposed elevation, cycle drainage, and erosion control plans subject to review and approval by the city engineer. Submittal of the parking lot plan, including calculations from previous service, and paving of the identified parking spaces according to the plans approved by the city engineer. They did go in front of the planning commission, and they unanimously recommended to the councils to grant the extension until July 1st.
Discussion? Kevin, most of you have extended the CUP for Millhausen F411 Nelson and 350 Emerson. Second? Boyd?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have an eye on motion carries four of them, to extend the CUP for Millhausen to F411 Nelson and 350 Emerson.
And then the third item Joe wanted to put on is, she just wanted to provide the council with an annual report of what the planning commission did last year. It's a list of activities, and would you like me to go through them or not? Would you like me to go through them?
No, that's fine. And I'm asking you to also expand on any discussion of those. And I appreciate the report being in there, it's nice to know what's actually done for that. Park and Rec?
Sylvia is not here tonight, so I will just go over. We discussed again the council improvement plan, which we kind of tabled till the next meeting, as Sean wasn't there, so they wanted him as part of the participation, so this has to come in. The archery practice range again was tabled without saving as well due to the gentleman that's helping with that coming out of town at meetings, so he should be there in February. Skate day is planned for Saturday, January 23rd, from four six. Looking good, the current field is ice rink's looking good, so hopefully it'll go well. And the signing capture of the Christmas tree decorations. Flats are ready, in frames, ready to be delivered to the participants that were chosen. Open forms sent them?
Yes. Through the trail plan?
Good evening. Do you have any answers for their head, or are you guys pretty familiar with that? We have to give your name and address, okay? Brooklyn 707, Brook Circle West, Montrose. The only thing that I wanted to address for you guys this evening about the trail plan is, we had completed the trail and park portion, but not the CIP portion. What I wanted to get some discussion or feedback from you guys is that when we do complete it, we should be now entertaining some grant writing. I have a huge pack of things that we potentially are eligible for. Sean has a little bit of expertise in this, maybe he has expertise in this, and I know that Joe does as well. Financially, I think we want to use as little of these people that will be charging us as possible. If they already have a flat rate, for as much as you want to use as many hours as you can, absolutely, let's go for it. But if they're going to be charging the city per hour, I would volunteer to try. Put it out there. If I can get some assistance from others like Sean, and maybe that definitely means we'll go for it.
I certainly don't see any restriction for someone on the committee, or the commission pursuing those grants on behalf of the city, you'll need to be signature'd already. And I see, is there anything else any to add to that in the public area? I think that's a good plan, to be able to pursue those, because it's a good option to be able to use that in as volunteer hours as opposed to charge for hours.
So it's some discussion for you guys when we're ready to.
Well, means charge for.
With that discussion though, I know that some grants have already been in the process of working through city staff and joint, so they've already started the process on some grants, so just to inform you of that. It's already been started.
If you're looking at something to keep track of, you can actually review the department rec meetings, spend time with you guys, and do it, so that you can get that report through the department rec in a minute.
Mr. Mayor, too, you know, we raise a lot of those grants, and I'm more than happy to do as little as you'd like, just, we have what we've done already, it's something come across, just during one of our staff meetings, if something, let me know, and I can provide some initial input on some things that I've heard on what might or might not make it, help make it successful.
Good.
You know, so I don't have a lot of time to do it, or any charge, charge at the time, or things like that, but I'd be willing to help, providing input.
And certainly, you probably work real close to Sean, and Sean is our, you know, staff, he is on the department rec as well, so.
Yep.
That would be good. Okay, fire department?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. In your package, first item is the activity report for December of 2015. I'd like to just draw special attention to the acknowledgement section, and acknowledgement from the fire department side, Alan Mortenson for time spent filling the ads for our calendar, Jeff Daniels and Mike Markton for the time spent on getting us enrolled into the Para statewide volunteer firefighters pension, Red's Cafe for catering the United Firefighters meeting, which was held on December 8th, and six individuals who applied for a captain's position, Mike Markton, Tom Markton, Tom Linek, Craig Otto, Darren Moore, Corey DeWitt. Next item, 2016 officer information. Matt Menard was selected to be the assistant chief for a two-year term, and then the three captains were selected for one-year terms are Mike Markton, Craig Otto, and Tom Linek. And they're all in their positions from last year still, so no changeover as far as that goes. Next item is homeland security emergency management training. The state is putting on railway safety training, oil and hazardous substance transportation awareness level course, and city staff and city council are welcome and encouraged to attend this training. It's a one-day training held on March 15th at 6:30 here at the community center. They'll be going over some of the stuff that's happening with the rail emergencies as it relates to the oil fields, out of decorums and stuff, as well as what we as a community and as a fire department need to do to mitigate issues that might occur with that stuff that's moving through. And then the last item is just a reminder that our relief association dinner is going to be held on February 6th at 5:00 PM. Dinner is prime rib and shrimp, tickets are available at city hall. There will be a presentation of firefighter of the year and elder awards at 7:00 PM. There's a raffle with cash prize drawings and silent auction also occurring there. Raffle tickets can also be picked up at city hall or through any firefighter. With that, that's all I have, unless there's anything else.
How do you determine firefighter of the year?
Uh, it is, we have a committee that is selected amongst the firefighters, two guys are selected from the committee previous year, and then firefighter of the year from the prior year, so this is only our second year doing it, so we're going to see how it works, so. Yep, they get a plaque, and their name goes on the plaque of the station as well.
Okay, engineering, regional park?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have one item for you, we've been working with the president, there's a little bit adjacent to the regional park, which is southeast corner, Mr. Jim Herzog. And if you want to go to the next page of that. That kind of gives a general overview of it. Mr. Herzog has a shed located near the west property line, his property, his existing property line is all highlighted red there, it's a little bit difficult to see, but I can kind of see it. The corner of the shed is actually a couple feet over, over his property line. And then he also has a overhead door to access the shed on the, would be the westerly side of his, end of his shed over there. He's been using the property beyond his property line for a number of years, even prior to the city obtaining the park property through tax forfeiture. I look back at aerial photos, and it's evident, through the aerial photos that relate, as well as the trees that are growing there, that he's been using that property for some time. How that all came about, I don't know for sure, but we did survey the property back when we got the, obtained the park through tax forfeiture, and double-checked to confirm that that property line is correct, that's shown there. So what we've been doing is working with, with Mr. Herzog on a plan to basically address the access issue in the shed, so that he can still maintain access in and out of the shed on his property, and we can still use the park for its intended purpose. With the design of the roadway, a rattle lane, which would connect onto the existing end of the dead end real there, and continue to the northwest, it was planned all along that we were going to curve that road to the westerly a little bit, to the west a little bit as we got up to the shed. So essentially, there's some dead space in there between where the roadway is going to be and the shed. There is enough room in there as currently designed to be some of that right over some of that property from the city back over to Mr. Herzog, so that he could maintain access into and out of the shed for a driveway, and his existing tree line could be maintained there as well. So if you go to the next sheet, and, yep, actually back up to, one more back. That's a drawing showing a configuration of a proposed driveway. Basically, what we would be doing is, at the time that a rattle lane is constructed, with curb and gutter, we would put a curb cut in for a driveway, just like a state residential driveway is, and then the property owner could construct a driveway entrance from the roadway or from the curb cut up to his shed. from the roadway or from the curb cut up to his shed. And that's how he would have access in and out of the shed, he actually found a rapple lane. Rapple lane in the public street, so that's, that's the access that he'd allow. So included in your council packet, there is a survey showing the property that we needed over to Mr. Herzog. There's a small, small sliver of property as well, actually in the southwest corner of Mr. Herzog's property that we needed from Mr. Herzog to the city. And that's just to maintain a constant distance from behind the curb of a rapple lane or bolted mark space essentially. So I guess it's my recommendation that the council approve this if you wish to go forward. I think it would go a long ways in taking care of, of the issue and it really doesn't affect what the city is going to use.
That driveway there, he would, you know, that or?
You'd be responsible for building that driveway. We would probably put a five-foot wide, five-foot lawn, concrete deeper on the path of it. Probably build the road and then beyond that.
That's pretty steep along the way too, what our plans on that side of the roadway there.
We did check the, we shot the actual elevation of this shed there and we need to bring that roadway up a little bit higher than what we currently have designed it. I think the way it's designed right now is like 14% grade. So what we can do though is we have plenty of road, we can just break the design of that roadway up a little bit higher to flood the driveway and we'll try and keep it at 10% or less, which is safe standard.
Will it be high enough to, for water to wrap all of that?
Yeah, rattle will settle much lower than, than we should, so, yep.
And I'm confident Jim Herzog has all four of his roles, so we should be, instead of that. Any other discussion? Do we need a motion to approve on that one?
Yes, I think that'd be good, yep.
Want to approve the needing of the small sliver of land west, northwest, west corner of the Herzog property to the Herzog and also have them be back to the city, the small sliver to maintain the roadway distance or rattle the lane or drive. Here's the lane, the rattle lane. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have an eye in the way?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-0 and we'll shoot that.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to do business, Randy's sanitation.
I think we have some residents that have some needs today. In your memo, I just, they are requiring a 75 cent increase per household. They're here to talk about that today.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. We're here tonight to request an increase based on the Minnesota pollution control agency's restriction on disposal statute, statute number 473.848. They began to enforce that statute that's about 20 years old on January 1st of this year. And in preparation for them enforcing that statute, the three processing facilities as well as the landfills all took rate increases to incorporate that additional volume. So I believe there's some of the letters are in your packets. The Ramsey-Washington County site increased by 26.08, Hennessy County by 19.6, and Great River Energy, now River, by 17.8. The landfill increase was just right at 25%. So the blended rate, when you add all that together, was about $9 a ton. So the average home produces a ton of waste a year, so you have $9 a year that has to be recovered, so when you divide that by the, by the 12 months, you come up with the, it's actually 79 cents and even after 75 cents or less than what it actually costs. So unfortunately, we have to look at an increase now. The good news, and I think Manny framed it up pretty well in her letter. You know, the state's taken the position that they would like to divert as much waste from the landfill and, and preserve that, that valuable landfill space. So five years, 10 years down the road, you're not looking for an increase on the landfill. In fact, just recently, Wright County turned down the, you know, reopening the landfill up here in Buffalo. So that's landfill space that's not available. So sooner or later, if you keep to put, if you keep putting 800,000 tons of waste in those landfills that is not being, that is not being, that is not being processed. Eventually those landfills will fill up and now you're right back where you were last year in Wright County. So I guess in the long term, you can look at it as a good thing that the state's gonna take a closer look at what we're doing with processing, but in the short term, there is a cost to it.
Discussion?
Is there any kind of incentive for like recycling to reduce the landfill?
You know, we have an organics program that we offer here in, in Montrose. And you know, as you, when you look at the, the cost of landfilling at about $70 a ton and you look at the cost of landfilling processing blended rate of $70 a ton, you look at organics at about 40, that's a pretty significant decrease. If you'd like, Jeff can certainly work with the city to promote that organics recycling program. It's something that we offer here in the city. So it might be a good time to look at it again, because it's a way for each resident to step down in the size of service they have and save some money if they choose to recycle their organics.
Or just recycle, yeah. I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we have a, a pretty good recycling program here. We have a single street program going in Montrose. But it's certainly a time you have an increase like this, it's time for people to look at what they're throwing away and how can they better sort through their, you know, the waste they have used in their home. Because long-term, it's going to save them money and, and these increases, well, well, this is locked down now for three years and I do want to point out, we have an increase in our next, in the renewal contract in 2015. We'll bump that out to 2016 because of this. So we looked at it, just before we can slide that out with an increase to help mitigate this increase.
Yeah, three years.
Yeah, the next term may be three years. So then you'd have one increase and it would actually be, you know, basically three years from now.
So you can give us more information then on your agenda?
Yep, they'll get that to you, get that to you tomorrow. Actually, we've updated our program a little bit, made it more affordable, so it's a good time to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
And I can answer any other question that I may have, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question on, on this one. Whether it's in 10A or 10B, I guess it doesn't matter. I'm looking at the packet at page 52 as the, I think it's the old agreement as of June 2013. That was drafted by your prior legal council, so I, if it's as simple as inserting the new rate, if you approve that this evening.
Well, I think the
We got that contract.
The reason why the, the fee is on there is because we, the city has been contacted by another garbage company and is wondering if the city is going to go for RFP. So they have to make a decision.
Yep, all right.
But that will be for next year?
Actually, this contract expires in May of this year.
At the time we did this contract, there's a, there's an extension, so there's a renewal that would go into effect and then expire in 2016. So that's in place, it's just I'm sure it's up for discussions to whether you want to do that or what you want to do. But it was in the contract that was set in 2015.
Discussions on RFPs for that?
That's going to be RFP. To get to IMA first.
Do we need to do that now or is it part of the next contract date?
No, I, when does I go into, that'll go into effect.
If it's easier for you to do it with the next contract, we'll wait for that, if you renew it.
So then that would be the, it's for the next year?
So the, so the way I read the contract is, start where I want. The contract shall commence on June 1st of 2013, remain in effect through April 1st of 2016. May be extended by written agreement of the parties for three years. And upon the terms and conditions as provided in appendix A, which is on page 58. And that's the pricing. So if the council approves A, then we, then this part B will need to make a new contract effective as of June 1st of 2016 with the new rate.
Yes. Or just change the, what? Or just change the appendix, the pricing.
Yeah.
Now we can table then the increase request and look at book one and I have B. For is an RFP for sanitation services?
Uh, A, I have A.
I have A, yeah.
Yep, and we put it on there because we received a phone call from another company that is just, they are wondering if, they know that the contract's coming up, so they want to know if the city is looking into doing RFP.
Certainly, you know, in due diligence, I think we should review, you know, RFPs for submission. And then look at that before we enter into the next contract. So we put that up for submission for both companies, for companies that are interested for our progress for proposals and then agree those and. Yeah, we just put.
Don't we usually submit to the different companies?
No, we just, we just run it.
We just run it and add, right?
Yeah, just to add.
So if that's, if that's the consensus of the council, I would say the, to vote on a proposal form probably be authorized by staff to do that and to publish it in the usual channel, generally. And then item B would be table pending results. That, the proposal request.
I am making a motion to support staff to pursue RFPs for sanitation services with the, after the period, current, under the current contract. In that, those proposals be reviewed and terminated maybe by council, we'll oversee those.
And just keep in mind that you have a contract expiring on IMA.
We need to set the date on that, submission time allows us to act in time for that. Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I have an eye in the way?
Aye.
Okay, so we're off, we just put that. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Non-resident volunteer participation in commission.
Yep, I can tell that at the December 21st, personnel committee meeting, there was a discussion as to whether non-residents should serve on the planning and zoning commission and the park and rec commission. And then the personnel committee recommended that it be brought to the city council for discussion. State statute doesn't require that the commissioner is residing within city limits. But so typically it's the city decides if a residency requirement is, is the route to go. I did note that frequently cities limit eligibility to residents just because people feel that commissioners should live in the communities that they plan and create. But some cities may wish to allow non-residents to serve on commissions to increase the pool of eligible citizens as well. I did put together a list from a few other cities, just giving you an idea of, you know, if, what other cities require. And there are a few that, there are a couple that say that, I mean, they do allow non-residents to participate. I would say a majority do not let non-residents participate. I would say that if non-residents are allowed to serve on the commission, that they limit the number of seats available to that, to those people. Like if there's seven spots open, two of them would be available. Or if there's five, one would be available to a non-resident. So it's.
So currently right now, we have interest in the park and rec commissions. And we have three commission members up to five, right? So if we go up to five, we could have one be a non-resident. There was other discussion that that one would be within the district, Montrose School District area. So District 877 would be the stipulation.
I, I think it's up to you to the council.
Yeah, I think that was our discussion, though. If they're a non-resident, the only thing then that we would ask is that they would be within the district, or Montrose District, School District.
Either that or they should have a clear vested interest in the community. So I like the feeling that, you know, they're in the business in the area or they're affiliated with the staffing on the church or something of that nature. So they have a clear, clear vested interest in the community. Maybe the way that we want to word that. And I think we would limit it to no more than 25% of the commission. As to where we are, like one per, one per five, one per five, seven, two per seven is good. But then if our park and rec is smaller than that, you go down to three sometimes. So we would have to say that the park and rec has five positions, but one of them would be allowed to a non-resident. That worked out. I think that's a good idea. I think we just need to word it that they have a clear, clear vested interest in the community.
So then a question would be, since we have three park and rec commissions, if we take that fourth one and non-resident, what are you doing for sake of a tie? Because the liaison can't decide.
Don't you appoint a chair to?
Well, the chair, the chair would be the deciding factor, that's right.
Okay. So this would actually have to come back because we'd have to amend the ordinance.
Let's go ahead and amend the ordinance and bring that to the next conference.
So yeah, so just to, just to clarify, there's an ordinance which discusses the park and rec commission, not just bylaws. I mean, do you have bylaws? I think just, it's just the ordinance.
We do have bylaws, okay.
Ordinance, ordinance formally introduced and approved.
But not, not just for, this will be for?
It would be for all. It would be for all commissions.
Any more on that?
I think we're good.
Commission page.
I can cover that too. So I was asked to bring this, to actually put this on the council meeting. I know it was discussed at the Personnel Committee. But, so the ordinance provides that commission, right now, that commission members are compensated for their service. Some cities compensate and some don't. At this time, we have the rates set. I don't, we don't know when they were set. It's been that way for over 18 years, it's been that way since Wendy started. I just compared, did a comparison for other cities. A lot of cities wanted to pay some to, I know. I know at the December 21st Personnel Committee meeting, it was supposed to maintain the compensation for commissioners, but, I was asked to put it back on, or keep it on the agenda, I don't know if you want to talk about it.
Or you want to come in on that call?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a friend, so that's for sure. When I, okay, for the record, group loops, 707, or several of us. When I volunteered to serve on the park and rec, I didn't realize that there was commissioner compensation, or whatever term you use. When HFC came at the end of the year, I looked at this and I went, what a logistical nightmare for the city office to have to deal with. It's not a huge help. But the amount of paperwork that goes with it is, whether it's a dollar, or it's a million dollars, they still gotta do the same amount of paperwork. And my thought process was, why are you paying someone who's a volunteer? That means you're not a volunteer, you're a paid participant. If you volunteer, it's free, you're giving of your time. So I wanted you guys to revisit this. Wendy did say that it had been brought up, and you guys had discussed it. But from, from my point of view, I think it, good work. If it, if it was $150, over, you know, 10, 15 people, that's a good chunk of money that the city could be using for something else. I don't want to say more valuable, because volunteer time is priceless. But it just seems like there could be a equal or better value for those dollars. Not to mention the amount of time that they're, I don't want to say wasting either, but essentially they can, they could be used for other paperwork that was of a higher priority. So if you guys want to re-discuss it, I guess I would appreciate it, because I just, I was kind of ridiculous that I got paid for volunteering.
Thank you.
And we kicked this around quite a bit, because it's a really small slate. I mean, it's basically a business. And from my standpoint, I think it probably should come for both of those commissions. And if we get a consensus from the commissions that they should do away with it, then we can do away with it. It's been that way for 18 years, so it has a legacy as well. I'm certainly in favor of approval of the commissions, as they don't want to have it anymore. If you don't have it, then it keeps us from having to do a small check every year for volunteer positions.
And that side, we approve two, the volunteer should be a volunteer.
So can we take that back to both of those commissions? And have that be discussed on their commissions, and have a recommendation come back to council as to what these two, those commissions want to do? And then we can act accordingly. That, fair enough?
They only pay the two, the two commissions, right? So it's an average of about $1,700 a year that we put out.
Do you want to confirm it, I mean, counting the same two? Well, yeah, we should do it all.
Yep.
No, it's, that's only the two.
The only two, there's only park and rec and, well, planning.
Yeah, I mean, park and rec and planning are going to, those are the only two commissions, yeah.
Yeah.
Two commissions.
Any further discussion on that, or just table that till we get the word back from the commissions? Newsletter?
Okay, so currently, the Montrose newsletter is done on a quarterly basis. It's a really good communication tool, I think a lot of cities have a newsletter. It's prepared by city staff, it's printed in the office, folded, stapled, labeled, and mailed. Staff, I'm just looking at the amount of work. In that previous city I worked for, we did all this in office and decided to actually look at what it would cost to do it, to outsource it. Just, and so when I saw that Montrose was doing that too, I was like, oh my gosh, like, it would be worth looking into, maybe contracting it out, because of the amount of time and energy and, that it needs. So I did put together some cost estimates, just with paper copies, labels, staff time, postage, just did some comparisons. Really, it's, it's not that big of a difference. The newsletter, if we did go to a printer, it would, it would be on gloss paper, it would be full color, eight pages, stapled down the middle. They would, they would actually mail it out for us too. So they would do all the labeling. It's, it just makes sense to me, just, I mean, the last time we went through the process, it just takes a lot of staff time and energy, and I think that that time could be put somewhere else, but that's just, I guess, I just put that information together for you to look at, and, I mean, I, I don't want to say that it's not something that, I think this is a really valuable thing for the city, and I think staff does, does like working on it. I just think that it could, staff could probably be putting their time towards something else, if it ends up, you know, if it's pretty similar in cost, so.
So basically, we do send all the information to Anna, still, she assembles it, utilizes that points, she's back to the company, they do everything.
And say, $500 for it. You ever take? Make sense? Need a motion, try? Yeah, we should, yeah. We should, yeah.
I would like a motion then to outsource getting the newsletter scripted, but, yeah, still assembling and putting it together, and then having the company do the other thing.
Oh, I mean, I think the, I did two quotes. Nystrom was 220, I mean, 927, 79, I think, and then Turtle Mac was 921, but they don't do the labeling of the costs, they get a couple hundred more, so I think Nystrom was actually, she went on the...
Okay.
So...
That's it, that's my, so, I'm watching down. Did I do it wrong?
Yep.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Hi.
I'm an I, Lloyd?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Let's see, carries four, that outsource the park and rec, and be printing of the quarterly newsletter. All right, fee schedule?
So the only difference in the schedule is the sewer access charge. I think it went up, oh gosh, I don't know.
200, please.
I think it was just, I think it was 200. So the only change is, it went from 4,800 to 5,000.
That's all been approved or ready?
Yep, so that's, nothing else has changed.
Motion to approve the fee schedule, 2016-01. Ordinance 2016-01?
May I interrupt, but it's, bottom page 70, there's just a date type of change. This 11th day of the process.
There's a little light above that, too, maybe.
Yeah, item D, and then, and then we, page 71, we have one demand, it's a second, but. Clear, good, second.
Fee on second, how much it costs? And then the fees are not, because you got your, like, retaining laws, by $50. We were there in September, long ago.
These are... Those are the building permit inspection fees scheduled through, that's the building based on value. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
So these are the...
Because see, our, our building permits are based on what the cost of the building, or...
Yeah, I think those are...
Minutes are there for Lloyd. It's considered a best, so...
It's based on state, estate building.
If you look on page 69 on the top, that's, there it says, 1 to 2,000 is $20. That's what is the actual building. Okay, that answers my question.
Sorry, so there is a motion to approve of the changes?
Not yet. I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance 2016-01. As amended on, as shown on page 70 to correct it to 2016, in the 11th day of January 2016. With signature by Maggie, I think. Second?
I'll second.
I'm an I, Lloyd?
All right.
Jill?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Motion carries four, 2016 appointments?
So I think this should be based on the Personnel Committee discussion that we had. I think the only thing we have to take off is Matt Menard, under the Emergency Management Director.
Did you want to add fire chief for the Personnel Committee? It's not listed on there.
Yes, we should.
Oh, yes.
I need to make a motion for a...
Do we have a liaison from, have a 12?
Development?
Maggie's actually taking one of those meetings right now.
Oh, no, I think Michelle's thinking of redevelopment for the city.
Yeah.
Which I thought was taking a break. They're not meeting currently, are they?
Which, which commission? Have we talked redevelopment?
Yep, they are meeting on a quarterly basis.
Well, they are, yep. Do we have a liaison for that?
I think you have a liaison from the EDA, which, well, I'm only meant to one meeting, so I don't know.
So, John Barber?
So that would make sense.
Oh, John Barber's on that.
John Barber is on that, yeah, and he's EDA.
But he definitely doesn't come to council meetings.
Right, so how do we get the updates from? Is your, are attending right now?
Yep.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, motion to approve the appointments?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2016 appointments with the Republican and our Emergency Management Director, and the addition of Kevin Flipper, the Fire Chief, under Personnel Committee. Awesome.
Lloyd?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
I'm an I, this carries four, four, with appointments as of the day. I think Minnesota Cities, property rental dividend.
Yep, so this is just a letter from the Minnesota Cities, I think every year they send, they send each city a dividend. And so we just wanted to provide that information, about how much money that we received in 2015.
Will we set a date for a workshop for the EUA R review? And work through the process for renewing that?
And we do, we did talk, our staff talked, and I think the planning commission is planning to attend that as well, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we need to consider that as well. We're hoping, I think, that we, I think that's...
I would like to do it, I would like to do it, I think we need to get that approved, you know, approval out for the update, because that might collapse and become, you know, non-important.
About the 4th Monday, like, we used to have council meetings? Or is that too far, like, everywhere?
Shaun, weren't you thinking, I mean, this is going to be hours, right?
I talked to Justin a little bit more on that, since we've talked, and he's probably estimating three to four hours.
So we either have to do a weeknight, where we start earlier than seven?
Right.
Or a weekend?
Weeknight?
Weeknight, I agree.
Forever, I think.
Or we split it up into two, if we need to do it that long. We just soon take care of it in one shot, can't, whatever you decide.
We could do, was it too far, to do that Monday at three, like a Personnel, like you'd only do Personnel at three? Could be done by seven? We did the Monday, the 4th Monday?
Are you going to have time to be ready? Yeah, I worry for, or, I don't know, be January, 4th Monday, January?
No, you guys said February.
Yeah.
In February, so that gives you a month and a half.
That was Monday in January?
Yeah, it's a volunteer meeting, that, it's a volunteer meeting, so, I, yeah, they said February for commissions.
I think February 22nd, yeah.
Correct, so. Does that have time?
What?
What, 10, 3? We have to do...
Did you have your personnel first, you said?
Well, no, I'm saying that's when they usually have a meeting, we don't have to, there is no personnel meeting. But I'm saying if we start it at 3?
Okay.
Could be done by 7, could the planning commission be here as well?
Yeah.
At that time?
Some of those might work.
I'm guessing that's going to be pushing it for all those, I mean, 4?
Well, they could attend when they get there.
There's content, so, we'll see.
Corey, do it, Sylvia?
4:30 maybe, if that's...
We could tentatively schedule 4:43, and then see if they're able to attend at that time.
Yeah.
That pushes us back a little bit, but that gets us started a little bit earlier. So February 22nd, or 4:30, somewhere there, that they have to start. We'll look at scheduling four hours. And Maggie, can you follow up with the Planning and Planning Committee as well?
Yep.
And you have a probably good, be good a joke to attend that as well.
And you probably could be good a joke to attend that as well. Yeah, she'd be joining that as well. Mr. Rarikos, I do have CDs available if you want a preview in anticipation of this great meeting. So you're highly educated prior to the event?
How long are these CDs?
I haven't even opened any. Folks about that thick, so.
We would be happy to have one shot.
Thank you.
Stop by and pick one up at your leisure. Uh, maybe you've got enough to go around there. I've got.
I know, right?
I got six or eight of them. I probably wouldn't have time to look at it before. Good reading.
I said you'd retire, you should.
I didn't think so.
Actually, once you retire, you get busier than when you were working, right?
You're totally retired, people would tell you that.
All right, um, upcoming meeting. You got, you wanna go through those, Maggie?
Sure, we have the EDA meeting, um, January nineteenth, planning commission on January twentieth, finance committee, January twenty-eighth. MFR dinner, February sixth, and the HSE, um, oil and hazardous substance awareness training is on March.
We also have a volunteer meeting on the twenty-fifth of January, I think, that we need to send out, um, invites to, usually send out to minors. Okay, that's on.
That's at, uh.
Seven, seven o'clock on the twenty-fifth, that's in hall.
We didn't bring that in until February twenty-second.
Yep. Do we also wanna set a date for discussing emergency management?
I think we did that, March sixteenth, six thirty.
No, it's that. March sixteenth is the HSE oil and hazardous substance awareness training, Kevin told us.
March fifteenth.
Sorry, March fifteenth, six thirty.
That's in, that's in.
Yeah. Or we wanna table it, just feel like we should get it on schedule.
Is everybody trained? Everybody's trained in hands right now, right?
No.
I don't know.
We do not, I typically get four, four, I think.
Chock, chock, folks, it's weird.
Melissa has her, is that it?
I think so. She has one.
I am not, just because I'm married to him doesn't mean I got free time. Pretty sure that doesn't dictate anything last of times.
You guys aren't talking same deal.
Right? We actually try to separate. Yeah.
Okay.
We separate work from home, and that's one of that, so.
We table that for the next workshop, and we have the next workshop to put that on as emergency management position and how to address that.
Should we plan the workshop date, though, because isn't there quite a few things we have coming?
I hate to jump on the pile on here, but a special council meeting on labor negotiations would be nice.
Yeah, when is the next regular meeting?
I, uh, I'm not working.
We don't have anything set.
There is anything set, yeah, I thought they had waiting to be done on the personnel.
Right, that was the last reason for session.
Well, we gotta plan these dates, I guess, there's so many things going on, so.
This work area workshop, have we taken the February, the, uh, the, uh, fourth Monday in February yet?
Yep.
Yeah, the, the.
The February. Okay, is one of you second, what were you doing then?
The AUAR, that's it. We could do the third Monday. No, we can't, who's in here on the third Monday?
The Lions? Lions are the first and the third Monday.
Isn't that, uh, personnel committee meeting?
In the afternoon.
In the afternoon.
Pick back on that.
Can we just go right after that?
I think the.
I sit in all, cause it's two plus anyway.
Since the director position is a compensated position, that will have to go up for applications.
So when we're doing that, February or January?
February.
Okay, February fifteenth, which is President's Day. You guys open up early?
No. It's a good day.
It's a great day to have a workshop.
How about the next day?
Tuesday, the sixteenth?
Sixteenth, yeah.
Sixteen.
I don't have to have everything on Monday.
You didn't have to be at seven.
No.
In order to do it on the sixteenth, on the Tuesday.
That's too late to do a workshop.
I'm coming from Singapore that day.
You work for them on Thursday?
I worship that, but I'm home on Thursdays.
Can we do the?
I know it's Fridays.
Well, the Tuesday, there are Mondays and Thursdays now.
Could we do February eleventh, it's the second Thursday?
That work for everybody else? Are we gonna consider that our personnel committee meeting?
Right. Yes. We are.
So February eleventh, at what time?
Three.
Three o'clock.
That's the personnel, Laura.
That's personnel and.
When's the workshop, that'll be right after.
Right after.
And emergency management workshop.
Wasn't there other things on the workshop?
Four.
Four. We had three.
But we have to do a union one as well.
Yeah, so we'll.
I don't think we need another union one, build a personal.
Well, then let's get another meeting. Personnel one first to get that down to one union.
I think that's why we take a break, is because.
We can do the personnel on the eleventh, do, oh, sorry, run over the personnel policy again on the eleventh. Right, so we can just continue that discussion.
Is it gonna take three hours again like it did?
Probably.
Well, we can't, cause that.
Only have one issue to address, that's the.
We can have a workshop, but it comes.
There's a couple of issues we need to.
Oh, yeah, but if it takes three hours, I'm trying, I'm just now alarmed with the workshop and the AUAR.
Probably AUAR is on the twenty-third, totally a different day.
It's this one, then.
For emergency management.
Yeah, but that'll only discussion people's pay and what it needs to do. So that'll be five hours.
All right. Unless you wanna schedule a different day, do we wanna have three separate workshop days?
Well, we're family, so let's just do it.
So Monday, you decided?
February eleventh, plan on bringing to Super Bay, and then.
Do you need GPM? Three o'clock. Personnel and?
Emergency management workshop and personnel policy.
Easy.
And February twenty-second.
Anything else on meetings?
So then, Andy, are you gonna come to go after the eleventh, so then we can schedule the next studio?
Yep.
Thank you, will you send me email? Thank you. Oh, now.
Acknowledge me.
I have a couple somewhere. I would like to acknowledge, uh, Public Works, Sean, Jason, and Dan Henzel for going out in this cold weather, freezing to death, getting them hockey rinks up and going. Um, I was over there the last couple of weeks, cause there's been a lot of grief through the town, but these guys are working hard, freezing, they've all been sticked. So I, I wanna acknowledge their hard work and all the time and effort that they put into putting, getting these things up and going for us.
I would also like to acknowledge Public Works, specifically Sean and Jason for helping us get our skin unit over grass rate, allowing us to store it across the road.
And I want to reiterate the fire department technologies for, uh, Al Morrison, uh, for the calendars. Jeff Daniels, Mike Markkinen for, uh, the Farah piece, that was a struggle as well, did a lot of work. The catering that I had a good dinner with on Reds, and then also our applicants for, uh, captains. It was excellent, so I appreciate those guys and their efforts.
And some open form, was I supposed to put that in before?
Oh, it's Captain.
We, we didn't adjourn it, we still got that in ready.
Yeah, I can do it, I apologize in the pants, I do, really sick also. Uh, I have a, an issue, I guess I didn't know I had, Tony Downey, who represents the sixer one, also ballpark. Back in early two thousand fourteen, uh, we had moved a corporation to the building of the oil and controls. I went for that, we had to go for a conditional use permit, also a zoning change, and that whole process went through. The conditional use permit was for vehicle sales and farm supply, um, sales. And somewhere along the lines, some stuff got screwed up. And the vehicle sales, which I'm not sure if you did all of your aware of, but if I wanna do, like, horse trailers or equipment trailers, farm trailers, whatever, you have to have a vehicle license afterward, or certainly, cause they're titled. So when I say used car sales, you know, it's, it's kind of a broad brush stroke of anything that would have title with it. And obviously, everything was approved, my temporary status with the state motor vehicle department was lifted, cause once I moved from Delano to Montrose, they put me on temporary status until the conditional use permit was changed. So according to the state, I had a conditional use permit for vehicle sales. And so now a year's gone past, I, I think some personal things I take care of, so I haven't really got the business up at the moment. And about a month ago, um, Joe sent me a letter, cause I had a couple semi-tractors that I had for sale out there that I was selling for a finance company. And also I had somebody that wanted to rent one of the newly renovated offices, um, for some used car sales also. And they went to the city and they said, well, they don't have a conditional use permit for used car sales. And it was all exactly the time that Joanne sent me the letter, saying that you have to get those semis out of there because you don't have a permit to sell used vehicles. And so now a year and a half's gone by, and I'm like, wait a minute, I was fully under the agreement, granted, it's probably my problem, cause I didn't read the exact documents, but I just removed my dealer's license with the state, as far as they're concerned, I have the correct conditional use permit for whatever bar was sent them. And of course, the unfortunate thing, as you guys all know, there's been a lot of turnover in Montrose, and so, and mayor, and just in that short year and a half, so I can't even go back to lean on somebody that would've been at the meetings and said, hey, you can remember, this is what we talked about, this apparently is not what I'm written about.
You still wouldn't have the farm shop, or is that gonna be?
It's, it's kind of down on the road, I mean, it's, I mean, the terminology got kind of broad, I mean, farm supply, well, it can be trailers, it can be, uh, we're doing some animal structures now, a row animal size, um, but we're just, just starting out, trying to get, you know, the business up and going. But my whole point all along is my four years of background in horse horse sales in Delano, um, I need something I can generate cash flow, you know, the sales of trailers, some used cars, some trucks, some semis equipment or whatever, um, so technically, I don't need a used car license to sell a tractor, but if I sell anything that would have to be titled, you know, then I do need it. So I guess I'm look, more looking for suggestions or input on, I don't necessarily think it's fair for me to go back to the planning commission and start all over from scratch and go all the way through the whole process. I put twenty thousand dollars in asphalt, I'm sure most of you are aware of that, and it's not a hundred percent clean up, I'm aware of that, um, Joanne's maybe well aware of that, but this leaves a lot better than what it was, you know, a couple of years ago. We put about fifteen thousand into the offices, new bathrooms, new everything else, and now I'm sitting here with not having what I thought I had originally. So I guess, I don't know how to.
I would love to be working with Joe to amend the current CUP, I think that's the process. The conditional use permit is already in place, but amending it would be easier than starting fresh.
And I was on the docket last, I'm not sure, was it last week, two weeks ago, two weeks ago for the planning commission, it's just a review, um, but that was the same day, I think I got the letter or after from Joanne about the other stuff, and they, I couldn't make it because I didn't find out about the meeting till four thirty, but you probably wouldn't have wanted me there anyway.
We could, you're, you're in a meeting last night.
Yep, I think it's, I don't know if there's certain posting requirements, so if you do a CUP amendment, I know, um, I don't, I'm pretty sure that there is.
There are.
I mean, it's, it's outdoor sales. For farm supply, well, she told me, I said, well, the, the one semi I sold to a farmer, so how is that technically, is that farm supply? I mean, how, I don't wanna make that a big, really wide gray area, but now I have something sitting here that would like to rent an office that I just remodeled, um, for some used car sales on, on minor scale, and I can't move forward with that.
Um, Joe's in the office tomorrow, right?
Next week.
Usually on Tuesdays and Thursdays, no one should tell me.
I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, I know she's been looking into it, unfortunately, she's, I did ask her to be here tonight because she didn't.
Well, it was, it was kind of spur of the moment, I, I don't really have much plan, and I just got heard it was coming up, and I thought, uh, it's good, it's a good place to start his hand. And I don't believe, somebody explained that they went back to the minutes and can't find anything on the minutes, but I can guarantee if you went back with the videotape or the noise tape of it.
Yeah.
Then it would be pretty, pretty clear.
Was that August of twenty fourteen?
Uh, it was, that's when, that's when the state motor vehicle department got the letter from ours, so I'm not sure if it would've been in that August meeting or.
Probably July.
July, probably. It was.
You should have looked at the minutes.
It was a considerable process, I think it started in probably April or something, I remember right.
You should have looked at the minutes.
Because it's only change, yeah, initial use change.
Maggie, can you kind of follow and do the go-between work on that?
Sure.
You can give back the, make sure Maggie has the best contact information, so we're ready to, it's be done.
Okay.
What, what you need to do, I think, amend that process would be probably the best way to go ahead, considering Maggie's there and that people are pretty, uh, more than likely, let's still leave it before planning is only, and probably have a public hearing if there's a significant change. And we'll see if you can deal with that.
And we could look a little deeper into, you know, if we can, I mean, we do have all the recordings on file, so.
Listen to them, but.
Not necessarily, I mean, if we have the exact, I mean, meaning, I just pull it.
Yeah, we can find the right ones and pull it.
So somewhere, I don't know, you know, and hence, since then, Emery's truck and trailer, and, and he said to run it back, so then my conditional use permit, instead of starting over with a brand new one, got reopened up. And so I don't know if, or if you gotta change somewhere in there, but potentially that, it kind of just got, like, in a big, instead of having two completely different conditional use permits, it ended up in one big wadded up mess.
That was also when your dad was here.
Correct.
And just not through the whole.
Yeah, you just had that struggle, couldn't you?
Yeah.
How's he doing?
Good.
Good. Super. So, we'll follow up, Maggie, I'll tell you, maybe they get back again, if anyone, maybe you're.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. And Maggie, do you have a form as well, if you've got that form, can you get those? We need this too. You can give it to her, or you can give it to.
Okay.
I think that's the end of the conference. Want to do a jury?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
I would, I, Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.